Let's stand and have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we gather up today to discuss some important topics here. They're always important when we meet, Lord, and we just ask, as always, for your divine guidance, wisdom, and direction on each of these matters. We thank you for each person that has showed up regardless of what their questions or concerns are. That's what helps us make these decisions. We just turn this agenda over to you and just pray that you will bless it. We ask for your protection and blessing on all of our first responders, all of our servicemen and women wherever they may be stationed, and we just ask for your blessings upon the people of this wonderful county and upon those that serve in leadership capacity. We ask it all in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning and welcome. 9:04, and today is the 25th of April, 2022. We'll begin our regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court, actually our second major meeting of the month. Item number one is our public comment time. This is an opportunity for you to make any comments on non-agenda items to the court. You're also able to make comments on any specific agenda item as we get to those. I would ask that anybody that wishes to speak, complete one of our forms. I've already got three up here. So I'm just guessing that these three are going to have to do with something that's on the agenda. If there's anybody that wants to address the court on a non-agenda item, this is a good time to do it. Anyone? Anyone? All right. Item number two is time to consider and possibly approve minutes from our meeting two weeks ago, April 11th, our first main meeting of the month.
Make a motion for approval.
A motion for approval of that set of minutes is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And let me just say that Commissioner Applewhite has had a vacation scheduled, a specific trip that he signed up for quite a while back, and he is not here for that reason. Item number three, presentation by Callie Zeller from our Ag Extension Office, and this is regarding National Volunteer Week. Hello, Callie. Welcome, and the mic is yours.
Well, thank you guys.
Is it still working? Make sure it's still working. Tap, tap on it for me. Better put the cap back on the bottom there and hope it doesn't stay. There you go.
All right. Well, thank you guys for having us today. Last week, we celebrated National Volunteer Week. For those of you who don't know, my name is Callie Zeller. I'm the county extension agent for Agri, Culture, and Natural Resources here in Titus County. And with me today, I have my coworker, Luann Rollins. She's the county extension agent for family and community health. And then we've got several master gardeners that are representing us here today. And so we just wanted to take some time to recognize them for National Volunteer Week and recognize them. They put in a tremendous amount of time and effort into the community and their extremely passionate about what they do. So we wanted to take some time to recognize them. With the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, we have approximately 86,000 volunteers. And in 2021, they donated 4.3 million hours of time, and that was a total economic impact of $122 million for the state of Texas last year. That includes master gardeners, 4-H volunteers, master wellness, and master naturalist volunteers. So they make a big impact in the state of Texas and certainly here in the county of Titus County. So I'd like to bring up Ms. Sharon Cowan. She is one of our master gardener officers, and she's been a tremendous leader and asset to our group over the years. And so we really appreciate them. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time because she's going to tell them a little bit about what the group does. But I will say that our group alone last year had about 6,000 volunteer hours. One hour of volunteer service is $28.54, and so that totaled almost $170,000 just for Titus County. And I would venture to say that those hours were a little bit under-reported as well. And they do so much for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sharon, and she is going to tell you all a little bit about what the group does for our community.
I am Sharon Cowan. The first thing I want to do on behalf of the group is to thank all of you for the support that you give us. Very few master gardeners have the facilities that we have, either for meeting or for the grounds in which we're able to do our projects. We're very well aware of that value, and we thank you very much. The local master gardener group started in about 1998. Our goal is to educate and serve the community. Our members include people from Franklin, Camp, Morris, and Titus Counties. Classes are offered beginning in January. They include 50 hours of education and 50 hours of approved volunteer work to certify. Each year thereafter, a member must volunteer 25 hours and earn six CEUs to maintain their good standing. Currently, we have 51 members and 18 interns working towards certification. Callie has already mentioned how many hours we reported last year. These are the named areas that we have at the Extension Office. We have a nature trail with a picnic area. We have an azalea trail, and then there are beds for each of what I'm about to say. Dripped roses, perennials, superstars, grapes, blueberries, vegetables, butterfly, which is also a designated Monarch Way station, native plants, bulbs, herbs, and then a bed in front of the building, which is just a variety of things. We have an annual sale, which provides funds for all of the above, as well as a scholarship for NTCC students who major in an agricultural field. Proceeds from the sale a few years ago allowed us to transform the hoop house, which was donated to us by the city of Mount Pleasant, into a functioning greenhouse. Since then, we've built two additional storage areas and a cupboard area behind the Extension Building that has multiple uses. This spring, a smaller hoop house was built behind the greenhouse for plants that don't require the atmosphere of the greenhouse. Proceeds from this year's sale will cover everything that I've mentioned, as well as to accommodate and standardize the water supply to our various beds. We contribute to the Work Study Program at NTCC. We donate to the store, NTCC, as for students, which might be lunch, close to eating, and we also provide personal items for students who need them. Many of, most of the students at NTCC work part-time, a large percentage of them work full-time, and we consider it our honor to contribute to their success. At Christmas, we donate sleep items for women, underwear and socks for the children who end up in the safety shelter. We donate blankets and soft toys to the Sheriff's Department and its first responders in Franklin Camp and Titus County. These are to be given to people, to children that they interact with who are in crisis. We also contribute to Toys for Tots. A few years ago, we participated in making and the installation of the sign that is now in front of the Extension Office. Last year, we hosted a master gardener group from Arkansas who was passing through Mount Pleasant on their way to the Dallas-Fort Worth area. They toured our gardens, we provided lunch for them, and put them back on the bus with a handbag, with a goody bag of handmade items. We also hosted a group of Cub Scouts this past year. They looked at the gardens, but all they were really interested in was the nature trail. We host a tree giveaway every February in conjunction with the Forestry Service. This year, we were out of 1,500 trees in one hour. We coordinate with our agents to help with various programs, events, which includes a summer learning series for the public. We help with 4-H contests and other projects when the agents feel that we could benefit, that we could benefit and they could benefit from our participation. Pre-COVID, we had three years of an event that hosted 4th graders for a day of science activities that met some of the requirements of the TEA curriculum. We called it Hala Green. Hearts Bluff, Chapel Hill, and Mount Pleasant 4th graders were included. Pittsburgh and Mount Vernon were invited, but they chose not to participate. Feedback from the participating schools was positive. There were approximately 300 kids each day that we did this, and hopefully, we'll be able to resume that this fall. As stated at the beginning, our purpose is to educate and to serve. However, we've also become friends, and we enjoy working together. Again, I thank you for your support and organization.
Thank you very much.
Well, like Sharon said, we appreciate your support from the county level. And they are here as educators and resources, so feel free to stop by the Extension Office anytime. They're usually there every Wednesday from 8:00 noon, working around the office. So if you've got any horticulture questions, feel free to stop by. So thank you. We really appreciate you guys. Thank you to all the master gardeners that attended today for support. We really appreciate you guys.
What was the total number of volunteers? State, state those numbers again.
For the state or locally?
Here, locally.
Locally, almost 6,000 hours. So we had 5,904 hours for just 2021 alone.
And how many total individuals?
51.
51.
Total members.
And what was that theoretical rate of pay?
So one volunteer hour is valued at $28.54, so that totaled about $170,000 for just last year.
That's the going rate for a gardener these days, huh?
Going rate for a volunteer.
All right. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Thank you, Callie.
We've got some goodies for you guys, too.
All right.
Hey, Gary, while we're, would it, do you need any time to sit at a table and go over anything? Would it help you if I bumped you up to the top so you could get out of here?
Thank you.
Thank you. Pass those down there. Thank you. What do we have here? Tomato plants, all right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Callie. Y'all are welcome to stick with us. You're welcome to leave. We're pretty informal here as far as folks coming and going. Luann, anything you want to say?
I appreciate y'all and our master gardeners, too. We have the ignite program in the summer, during the summer, that we're going to do once a week, well, actually twice a week between the two of us. So they're going to, some of them are going to participate.
Very good. All right. Thanks to both of you. Just walking in the door is Gary Luba. Gary is from out of town, and Gary probably would like to be back at work. So I'm going to let him go ahead and make a brief presentation. I think this is a pretty quick action item for us, but it will enable him to get done what he needs to get done. So I'm going to jump down to item number six, and this is to consider and possibly approve payments to right-of-way property owners related to the FM 1735 project. Gary's a fairly regular attender here as we work through the purchase of 30-plus pieces of property related to our highway straightening project, widening project there on the College Road. So Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. And here I've got four payment requests. They're ready to go to the title company and for a closing. First one is parcel four. That's the Star Mark Convenience Store, the corner of State Highway 49 and 1735. And we had reached the admin settlement there, and the total cost with that and the title company closing fees is a total of $36,239.71. All right. The next one is parcel 10. This is for the fee acquisition part, just land only for this owner, Walter Jones. And the parcel cost plus the title company closing fees is $6,748.71. And then on parcel 10, there's another portion that doesn't involve land, but there's some compensation to the owner of the remainder property, Jeremy Shane Calhoun. And this were like general damages and cost-secure damages as a result of the highway widening, and it is $9,040. And then the last one is parcel 24. That's Jennifer Polk, displacede. So total there and the offer amount plus the title company closing fees is $115,805.71. And that's it on those.
That's a pretty big one. Explain to us one more time, and for anybody interested, why that's so large? That's kind of unique, and that's probably the biggest one of the whole.
Right. It involves a mobile home, and it's on a corner property. I can't remember the number of the county road, but it's kind of close to the cell tower, if you know where that is, off to the left, and to the church down there on the right. What's happening is we're taking the majority of that property, so there's a very small, just really useless remainder left. And so what we have to do is buy her out, you know, and pay for her mobile home and her property, her land. And so she's a displacede, so she's already, you know, working on somewhere to live. And this is, this is a priority parcel that takes out, still has some archaeological investigations to do. So this is one that we really need quickly so they can get that work behind them.
Okay. Thank you. Sir. Commissioners, any questions for Gary regarding these four?
I don't have one for these four, but I do have a question for you on that one of the house demolition.
Yes, sir.
What all is involved in that? Is it just the house alone, or is it any of the?
Yeah, it's just the house alone.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty bad. I mean, it's been used as just stores for personal property and just significant termite damage, you know, to the floor and there, you know, there's parts of it that's kind of caved in.
I went by and looked at it the other day, but I wasn't for sure exactly where, you know, what all was supposed to go.
Right. Yeah, just basically that. The house alone is bisected by the new right-of-way land, so it's just taking all the house down. And so you do have rights to enter upon the remainder to remove the whole thing. But anything else behind that, you don't touch that.
Okay. Should he coordinate with you before we start tearing things down to be sure exactly we know what we're going to touch and what we're not going to touch?
Sure. Absolutely.
Very good.
Yeah. Just going to call Commissioner and all. Yeah, we'll get that going.
Any other questions for Gary? All right. I would recommend that you approve payment to these four individual, or yeah, four total individuals on these four parcels, actually parcel number 10 being one parcel there. So three different parcels.
Make a motion when you approve payments.
Motion to approve payment.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Parchman, second by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Are you going to stick around? You going to?
Yeah, a little while. I might have to file some stuff in the county clerk's office.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll stick around or.
No, there's desks in there if you need to sit in there. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Okay. Item number four, this is probably, most of you are in attendance here to listen in on this discussion and participate on this discussion. This is an update on the Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department with possible action. Let me just make a brief opening statement here, kind of set, you know, give you an idea of why I've got this on the agenda. But please understand, this is not, this is not a trial. We are not here to discuss any particular individual's character, any individual's level of effort, or any individual's abilities when it comes to fire protection. The Commissioners' Court doesn't close a volunteer fire department. Volunteer fire departments are made up of volunteers within that community. And those volunteers can continue to do whatever they feel best when it comes to fire protection, working within the structure that we've created that relies heavily on the Mount Pleasant Fire Department. And so we can't just have people out there running amok. There are certain rules to adhere to. But again, this court is not going to make a decision of thumbs up or thumbs down on the existence of a fire department. The county has made a decision in prior years to contribute $1,200 fixed fee, or a fixed amount, on a monthly basis to each of our volunteer fire departments. We also pay run money to individual firefighters that attend an event. As part of what we ask for in return for the monies that are provided, we ask for some accountability by each of the fire departments. We ask to be able to audit the department, to see how funds are being used, and just to be sure that they're being appropriately used, because that $1,200 is coming from county taxpayers. We ask that the individual departments adhere to an agreement that was prepared and approved within the last couple of years. And as part of that agreement, there are certain obligations that each department agrees to adhere to. They agree to a minimal amount of training for their volunteers. They agree to provide a certain type and quality of equipment. They agree to adhere to a hierarchy of leadership when they show up for an event, and that basically relies on leadership from the Mount Pleasant Fire Department to take the lead role. And there are expectations of that department's ability to show up and to be there in attendance when there is a fire, or when there is another emergency event that requires support from that department. So nearly a year ago, we heard from Chief Jerry Clark, who had made the decision, along with his wife, to retire from the department. And after what I believe was a lot of prayerful consideration on the part of Chief Clark, he made the decision to close that department and was preparing to go through all the necessary steps to properly close it down. And many of you were here and heard those discussions, and many of you were participating in the conversation and said, whoa, wait a minute, stop, let's don't do that. We want to keep this department open, and we believe that we can provide manpower, womanpower, whatever it took, to keep this department going. So in effect, we had a reversal of a decision by Chief Clark. No, we want to keep things in place. Don't close down the count. Don't close down any of our, anything else legally that prohibits us from continuing to work. And so we had quite a few folks step up and say, give me that sheet. I want my name on that list. I want to be part of this volunteer fire department. And so we said, sure, let's, let's continue on. Let's give it a shot, and let's hope that we can, that we can indeed make this department work. So today, we've got two or three very committed folks that are regular, or somewhat regular participants in these events. We are not currently having any participation in the joint chief meetings when Chief McCray gets all the VFD chiefs together. We have what I consider low training participation in the Sugar Hill Department, and we have near-total reliance on the Mount Pleasant Fire Department and other surrounding departments. Now, I agree, those, all the words that I'm using here are subject to interpretation or a variance of opinion, and we can certainly talk about that. Only speaking for myself, not speaking on behalf of anyone sitting up here, my questions are, do we have a viable department? Here we are, nearly a year later. Are we making progress from where we were a year ago? Is the community receiving any benefit from the existence of this department? And are county funds being properly used in making these $1,200 payments to this department? I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we don't, this Commissioners' Court doesn't derive any benefit from losing one of our volunteer fire departments. We want every single one of them to be successful. The Mount Pleasant Fire Department wants as many successful and capable volunteer fire departments as is possible. But unfortunately, sometimes, and we saw it when we had to deal with the closing of the Windfield Fire Department, we just got to a point there where it just wasn't working, and it was time to close that department. And by closing it, it makes us able to make other adjustments, and we can assign various areas to other departments. Our Pleasant Fire Department understands there's not going to be any response from that department, and so therefore, we need to be possibly making changes when we know we're going to be the primary folks showing up for an event there. So I don't know if that's where we are right now, but I do feel like it's important that the residents of the Sugar Hill community understand what the reality is. And any decisions that we make here, I don't believe are going to result in any less fire protection than you've got right now. If anything, it will better enable Chief McCray and his staff of professionals, as well as the surrounding volunteer fire departments, to understand that maybe it's time, we need to, we need to step up and be able to better protect this community. Those are the things that are going on inside of my head. And so with that said, I'll open up the floor to any first commissioners that want to make a comment, and if not, we'll open up the floor to any of you that have come to speak. I know I've got a couple here. I've got Chief Grubbs and Wesley Vandiver here are wanting to talk about this particular subject. So again, I'll start with Commissioners, then we'll move out to the audience. Go ahead, Jim.
All I want to know is, I mean, over the past year, we have asked numerous times for someone to come and give us an update, and we hadn't been able to, I mean, hadn't anybody shown up. So we don't know what's going on out there other than the reports that we get from Mount Pleasant. So I would just like to, like to have somebody, you know, until we know that everything is up and running like it's supposed to, I would like to have somebody come up. I mean, y'all could, could do anyone to come up at least once, one meeting a month to give us a report on what's happening. Other than that, I do not want to see the department closed at all. I've been involved with the fire department here ever since we started them, and I enjoy working with, with the fire departments. I enjoy working with, you know, everyone on them. But I. But I, I have a responsibility too, to the taxpayers, to make sure that, that our dollars are being spent the way they need to be spent. So that, that's all I've got to say.
Okay. I was, I was really impressed last month with Sugar Hill's response to about six calls. I may be wrong on that, it's at least four calls. I believe they went on six calls, and we had four firefighters go to most every call. One, one or two calls, there was three firefighters. And so, as far as us paying the bills and looking at the call runs, it was just as good as any fire department. I didn't see nothing out of place, as far as how many calls and volunteer fire departments in anywhere in the county. So I keep up with them through Dana Applewhite. He hears a lot, or we can just call John, talk to him. I know Scotty Watson. I've talked to him several times. And it's easy to get ahold of folks, find out what's going on out there. I'm very impressed with them, and I'm glad they had that, I could loan them that tanker truck, which I hope they'll, you know, just go and give it to them in six months. They put a little money into it and got it, got it up to snuff. It'd be a great truck to take to fires. It's easier to drive. I'm impressed with the support of the whole community in, in Sugar Hill, and I think the fire department's a great thing. I think they do as much as any other fire department. Some ca, some fire departments get called more. I'll just say that. And they've come a long way in this year. I'm, I'm impressed, and I'm encouraged with the growth that we do have. And I'm, I'm fired up about it. I really like it, and I like the people that are involved with it. And as far as paperwork and different things, all our volunteer fire departments get behind on this or that, or an account balance or something. It's just normal for the, for the cause. We're not accountants or anything. And it's good to check on that. And I'm, I'm perfectly happy with them, and perfectly 110% support them. So thank y'all for doing the work out there at Sugar Hill.
I just want to say, I'm happy with them too, and I support them 100%. I understand everybody. They're volunteers. They all have jobs. I know it's hard to make some of the calls when they come in, but I'd just like to hear some of them get up and express themselves and tell us what's going on.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I've got Chief Grubbs. You want to start off, or Wesley?
Can I approach the folks?
Sure.
Here's also one of the departments not in there. Okay. Sir. If at any time, y'all have any questions, most of, the majority of y'all have my number. I work for a living, yes. I did take on the fire department, okay? Not an excuse. Anything else, all right? I'm doing the best I can, when I can, how I can, okay? There's some, some folks around, I'm not going to say Sugar Hill, but some other folks around that, you know, yeah, they've got 15, 20 people, yes, and they're running. We have six people, which are currently, right now, while uncertified, okay? Two of which are structured firefighters. We have not finished all of Chief McCray's training. We are working on it, and we are doing it as quick as we can. We also have ran pretty much, I'm not going to say eight, I'm not going to say 90%, I'm going to say probably about 60%, maybe 50% of calls. I have not got that, I haven't figured all that out yet, but we are trying. We are making calls. We are running when we can. But just like everybody else, you know, I keep hearing, "Well, you know, you're a volunteer fire department." That's right. Volunteer. We're not a paid department. Nobody's sitting over there in Sugar Hill, okay, at the department getting ready for a call. You know, I have a lot of respect for Chief McCray. I really do. He is a great man and a great chief on fire, on fire. Great man. Couldn't ask for a better chief. You know, I had a lot of animosity over Wesley Vandiver's funeral. I'd like to ask one question. Why didn't he matter? You know, he spent 15 years on the department. Numerous runs, uncountable hours, you know. He was a great man. That man I made a promise to. I would do my damnedest to make sure his fire department will succeed. I'll stick every dime I made into making it succeed. As a, Mr. Finch, I do appreciate the tanker. I also have a picture of it on my phone. I'll show you actually everything that it's done. We do, we have, we have put new lights on it, put sirens on it, put radios in it, hooked up the fuel line, fuel line for it. Got it pretty much ready to go, other than I haven't put a couple of other hoses on it yet. But you know, the lights, $930. All the sticker room was $256, okay? Any of y'all, and all of y'all, are more than welcome to walk in that fire department anytime you want to. It is an open door policy. It does not matter if it's a training night or a meeting night. Each and every one of y'all are welcome. You know, Brad has done a lot for us. I will say that. He's doing a lot for us on training-wise, whenever we ask him. Why would you want to shut down? And I mean, I'm just, you know, we are making progress. We are moving forward. Yes, I have not been in chief meetings. I work out of town, okay? My assistant chief has children, okay? There is no way that I could make it back here by 6:30. There's no way. I mean, even if I'm working in Paris, Texas, there is no way. Everybody has my email. If there's an issue or a question, all you have to do is email me, call me. I'll answer any question that you can get y'all asked. My livelihood and my, my house, my payments is what my, you know, what my job pays for. I would love nothing better than to sit in the fire department, okay, and make every day them call that I can. Would love nothing better. But I cannot do that. The last time we was here, the last time I was here, I believe it was voted on in here, and it was unanimous, that Sugar Hill, just be Sugar Hill Fire Department, and this was the end of it. You know, three weeks after that, I get an email from Judge Lee, stating, "Well, here it is again. John's lying. He's putting his name on stuff." I'm done playing the bull crud games, Judge. I like you, I like you, I really do. If y'all have a question, ask me. If you want to see documentation, ask me. I'll walk you into the fire department full records. I was nice enough to do it online, and I apologize, and I did a day them email letter, correct? Am I right, Judge?
I never got a response from you regarding that email that I sent to you.
You did get the first initial ordeal. I sent an apology, right, to you?
Yes. If you're referring to many months ago.
Yes, many months ago. But yeah, it'll, it's, it's a clerical issue, and I don't get it, I don't get, "I'm sorry, I don't get nothing." That is, that's the same thing as walking up, okay? You accusing your neighbor right there of stealing from you, then you find it, you know, a week later, and oh, oh, well, and walking off. That's, that's not the way to start off.
I'm not, I have no idea what you're referring to here. You got an apo, I got an apology from you, yes. And I sent you an email a few months.
A few months later.
After that.
Over.
And all I did was, I was conveying what was given to me. I said, "I'd like a response."
I have an email. Chief McCray has that email address. All it takes is a question. It's supposed to go to Chief and Chief, am I correct? Or is it supposed to go Chief to Judge to Chief?
I don't know how much relationship there is, honestly, between you and Chief McCray. You're not attending the meetings. I, and from my perspective, we, there's not a good relationship there.
There doesn't have to be a relationship there for him to send an email. It's on computer.
I can't answer that between the two of you. I'm, I'm just saying, I didn't get a response from you. I said, "Here's the concerns." Never heard a word.
And then I tried to take care of it. I called him, called Brad. We figured out what it was. It was solved.
It was what?
It was solved.
Okay. But I still didn't get a response.
You still have the time for that? Yep. Twenty-two. Yes, sir. Also, when we was in here last, the first time, I believe Brother Vandiver was the one here, it was stated that everything be returned to Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Am I correct? That belongs to Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department. When a TFS grant is done, it's done county, city, whatever, okay? There was TFS grant done for the air trailer under Sugar Hill VFD, which is Titus County. And that air trailer sitting up at Mount Pleasant Fire Department. I'm not saying I want it back, but I'm saying it does not belong to the city. It needs to be back to a county entity. If it was a TFS grant for, for a Titus County, it needs to be back in Titus County.
Which entity? Where does it need to be?
That, that's, that's, that, that is up to y'all. But it needs to be at a county department.
Why is it up to us?
I mean, it was originally done for Sugar Hill.
But why is that up to us?
Y'all are the county, am I correct?
That didn't answer the question. Once it becomes the property of a volunteer fire department, we don't tell you what you have to do with that.
Then it needs to go back to the volunteer fire department.
Maybe it does. I, I don't know anything about those details. I don't know where that trailer ought to be. It seems to me it ought to be in a place where it's going to get utilized.
Yes.
Does it need to be back with Sugar Hill?
If it goes back to Sugar Hill, yes. Yes, it will be ranked. Other than that, I really, I really have nothing else. But if there's anything that I can do, y'all do not hesitate. Y'all have my number, and y'all can call me at any time. My phone's on me 24/7.
Well, I, I, once again, I did send you that email. I did reach out. I guess I thought I'd get a response, but I didn't. Likewise, you can call me or email me.
I know that.
Is there any way that we can find somebody within the department to attend the chief meetings?
Yes, I can. I can, I can have two, I can have one of two people. The assistant chief will try to start doing it, which is Scotty Watson. He will try to start doing it. This past one, his wife had to work late, and he didn't have the kids, so he could not, he could not attend it. I've got three weeks left on the job site, then I'll be back to Mount Pleasant, then I will be, I will be here. Other than that, I'll make darn sure Ronald Collins is in, in attendance at the meetings, and he'll have all the information. Or if he doesn't have the information, if you will ask, tell him what you need, and he'll give it for you.
Okay. So when you come back?
When I come back, I'll be here.
You'll be here. Does that mean you'll be attending chief's meetings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. John, let me respond a little bit to this. You don't have to, you can just sit down, but I just want to say some good positive stuff about this report you brought me. I want to correct myself. I look at a lot of these when we pay our monthly fees. And this is five of the six. I think I'm short one, John.
You are.
Out of the six, five runs that I have, we, we had six members go to one run, three to a run, five to a run, seven to a run, and one run. It's 10. 10 people went to it. Really great participation. It's real exciting. And if you look at all these names on these papers, there's 14 volunteer firemen last month responded to a call. And you count Dana was a volunteer there for a while, and he's going to step back. That would have been 15, actually. So as far as the air trailer goes, I knew something about an air pack. I've heard, y'all, y'all can handle that.
That is not a call sheet. That is training sheets.
Training sheets, okay. The call sheets were then, maybe that's what I looked at when we paid the bill. That was maybe five or six calls, and there was at least three people, four people went on those calls each time. That's awesome. I, I like the support then. Then I'll say about, we had a meeting in February, might have been the end of January. We had a chief's meeting of all volunteer fire departments. I don't know who exactly got that meeting together. My, I don't know. The chief said, "Hey, let's all get together." Me and Dana Applewhite attended it. We went to Luigi's one night, got in the back room. We hashed out contract issues, training issues. It was very positive, a very positive meeting. And John was there. So he, he, he does go when he can. I'll say that. Every chief was there that night, plus several other members. It was real good. Now, is there one issue about a truck? It's the titles need to come back to Sugar Hill, and y'all got that under work. It takes a while. It took me a long time to get that tanker titled. So it's slow, it's slow go. So good. Everybody's aware of all that, and I appreciate your report. Things looking good there. Thank you.
Wesley, where is Wesley? Would you like to speak next?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Wesley Vandiver's son. I've lived in Sugar Hill, around Sugar Hill for 50 years plus, and I've attended church there currently. I don't live in Sugar Hill, but I am a property owner in Sugar Hill. My dad spent months trying to keep the fire department from getting shut down. Wound up on his first call, he, he wound up dying at the first call. There's lots of speculation on it. Things have been said that Mount Pleasant Fire Department had been directed not to assist Sugar Hill. I know there's been some personal things between people on different fire departments. That should not plan to affect here. This is for county. It is to protect the community of Sugar Hill. There's no way on God's green earth that Mount Pleasant can take care of Sugar Hill. First time a good rain comes along, they can't get across wide open. I've seen it where they can't get across wide open, they can't get across sulfur. I mean, wide open on 271, they can't go to 1402 or 271. So having a fire department right in the middle of the heart of the community, I mean, it just makes sense to have it there, sure. Chief McCray needs to be overseeing it. He is the county coordinator, but he is the coordinator. He should be making sure that the type, that the Sugar Hill Fire Department is getting the training that they need. They take the training that he provides. So if they're not getting proper training... So, if they're not getting proper training, maybe it goes back to Chief McCray, because he's the one that's providing the training that they need. So, I'm not calling no bad names on everything, it's just if he is the one coordinating the county, and he's providing the training, if it's good enough for him to provide it, it should be good enough for our guys, when they take it, to stand up for use in the county. Now, I feel like that there's personal personalities that conflict here sometimes. I can't understand why Jerry Clark, when he was fire chief, decided he wanted to shut the whole thing down. He didn't tell anybody anything about it till he got ready to shut it down. Now, hey, if he wanted to retire, go to the house, that's fine, but if he has the good of the community at heart, he should have been trying to find somebody to take it and run with it, instead of just coming into a meeting and saying, "Well, we're fixing to retire, we're going to shut the thing down." And then my dad spent months trying to keep it from closing. And now we've got it back up and running. You've seen the reports, the number of people that are showing up to, to the fires and to the events and stuff. They're making a valid effort. If the $1,200 a month that y'all provide to that county, or to that fire department, makes a difference in the county, we're in bad shape anyway. They could be accessing that $1,200. Chief McCray should step up and take charge, and make sure all of these counties get good training, make sure they got good equipment. He should be supporting them. The county should be supporting them, because if you've got a fire truck that is minutes away, they may not be able to completely contain the fire, but they might be able to keep somebody's property from totally being destroyed till Mount Pleasant can get there and help. Mount Pleasant is a great asset coming out to anywhere in the county. They have a lot of equipment, they have a lot of training. Chief McCray's got so many years of training, it's just unbelievable. Brad, you think? Good man. We've got some very good people in these positions. The volunteers are exactly what they're called, they're volunteers. If they can sit there and they can keep a fire beat down till these approved guys can get there and help put it out, they might save somebody's property, they might save somebody's life. And if $1,200 a month saves one person's life, the effort that's put into it, it's worth everything. That's all I have to say. I feel like the volunteer fire department, though, is very well manned, and we're making forward strides, and I believe it would be an asset to the county to keep it there.
All right. Thank you, Brad. And Brad, just as a reminder to you and anyone else, every, every two months, Chief McCray does make a presentation. He's got a lot of objective stats and figures, and those are available in print. You can watch it on the YouTube channel when we have those meetings. And, and at that time, he can tell you what training attendance he's got from each of the departments. He can show you how many people are showing up for a particular event. He's got an incredible amount, you know, a half inch thick of documents that are available if anyone would like to take a look at it. And as far as the training, you know, I, I think that the Mount Pleasant Fire Department does all they can do to provide training. You can't force someone to attend training. You can't force someone to watch a Dropbox presentation on their home computer. So, you know, at some point, yes, Chief McCray does coordinate a lot of excellent training, but if you don't come to the training, you don't get the benefit, and he doesn't, he doesn't have the kind of authority that can force somebody-
Exactly.
-to show up.
I will say this personally. I know over the last 12 months, every time we've turned around, all we've heard is they're trying to defund the Sugar Hill Fire Department again. We've been just trying to keep it up and running. If you're constantly fighting the fight of trying to keep your funding, you may not have time to concentrate on these other things. If we had the backing of the court, and we had the backing of the Mount Pleasant Fire Department, giving us encouragement and everything, and not every time we turn around whether they're fixing to defund us again. If we could just go about our business of fighting fire, we might have a chance to go to some of these training events. But for, I'm, I'm serious, the last 12 months, every time we turn around, we're here, we're getting defunded.
Okay. Well, I don't share that perspective respectfully, I just have to say that. All I can do is look at facts and figures that are provided to me. I don't attend these events. I don't go to these meetings. I don't show up for training. All I can do is get the bi-monthly reports that are being provided, and of course, I'm in pretty regular communication with Chief McCray as well. And so, this court hasn't had a conversation in a long time about defunding this department.
Chief, coming back to the Sugar Hill Fire Department that we're under the gun constantly.
Yeah, excuse me.
We constantly hear that. I'm, like I said, I've been a member of that community for 50 years, and I get, I get pulled into it a lot of times, partially because my dad was a volunteer for 17 years on that. But I hear a lot of what's going on. I'm friends with a lot of the people in the different communities, the different fire departments, and if, if you're being told that you're going to be defunded, and they're looking to shut you down, how encouraging is that to go take the training when you look like you're possibly going to be shut down?
There's nothing encouraging about it. I completely understand. I completely understand that.
We just need some encouragement and some help, and know that we possibly have a future. And with the possibility of a future, I mean, you see how many people are showing up to the, to the fire, to the fires and stuff. If we know that there's a good possibility, we're going to be a viable fire department, not lose our equipment again, then the encouragement to go to these training things is very vital. But why would I want to join and do something if I think two months from down the road it's going to be shut down? I'd like to have encouragement, knowing that it's going to be a viable entity.
And, and we would too.
Of stuff there to make it be a viable entity.
I, I think you have a lot of things there that can make it a viable entity, but we do need some more manpower. And, and again, this is not, I said, I started off by saying this, this is, we're not judging anybody's effort or their time availability. All we can judge is what are the, what are the end results? How many folks do we actually have attending training?
How many was on the report there? They had for the events that they attended. What was the number? That was quite a few people.
Well, I've got a lot more data that's provided to me by Chief McCray that I, that I utilize, and I haven't looked at these very thoroughly. This looks like a list of training events that were given, about five different training events. And again, if you'd like to see any of the detail that the court has given by Chief McCray, you can see, again, name by name, who's gotten what training, what training events they attended, and what, what alarm calls they attended.
I understand that, but it's just like I said a while ago, we keep being told we're going to be defunded. Where's the encouragement? Tell us that we have-
Well, we haven't had that, we haven't had that conversation in months. This is a conversation about that. From what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like that's the direction that we're going here today.
That's great. It sounds like that. I mean, we need told that that's not the direction that we're going, instead of being told that that's the direction.
I think you'll get a pretty good indication of that today.
That's, that's good. It looks a little more positive, but let's work together as a group. I think Chief McCray needs to, to be really hands-on in touch with all of these volunteer fire departments. He's got an extensive amount of training.
It's hard to do that when nobody shows up at the chief's meeting.
I know.
I mean, there's, there's some give and take here.
There's personal conflict that goes on, some of this, and so that needs to be put away. We need, we need to walk in the door and know-
Well, I'm not going to comment on that.
It needs to be business, is what it needs to be. So, I think-
Thank you very much, and thank you for the legacy that your father left, a fine individual, and-
Appreciate that.
We are sorry for that major loss to this department and to that community.
I appreciate that.
I will say, one of those trainings on my list was Station Two with Bradley Stockinger, so they did go to one of those trainings at Mount Pleasant, which is good.
Okay, Hudson.
Yeah, just a matter of fact, if you can go back to the YouTube video from last month's meeting, you spoke about defunding Sugar Hill. Just, people want to get their facts straight.
As part of Chief McCray's presentation?
No, sir, you personally spoke about that.
As part of Chief McCray's presentation, I believe.
You personally spoke about that.
That's probably correct. I probably have made that comment. Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
No, I've got a list. He read a good copy of the document.
Okay, folks, two, two good presentations. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Would you come up there to the, and, and maybe bend that, that microphone down where it's, just take, grab that stick and just bend it. It'll, it'll bend, not, not the micro, you can pull the microphone out if it's easier for you. There we go. There it is. We got it now. Just, just let her hold it, let her hold it there.
Can't be King Holmes, Ben.
Well, but, but we need the mic so that the people that listen to this later on, on their computer can hear you. Any- Well, that's all right, just-
Okay. My name's Gwen Burkett. I've only been a resident of Titus County since September of 2017. Came here after I was widowed. And one of the things that, I, I'm not in this for anything, I don't really know much about it, but I have a personal opinion I would like to state. I was a victim when I was a young mother with two children. I had a 95% loss at my home due to a fire. I don't think any of us really realize the importance of having one close to our home. Now, even though I was fairly close to a fire department, my dog was a casualty of that and all. And I think when we look at what we do with the local fire department, I, the only thing I heard that made me make this statement is the fact that there was some type of getting from one place to another as to Sugar Hill. But I would just love to say to everybody that the importance of a fire department, whether it's Mount Pleasant or a volunteer at Sugar Hill, I haven't had any experience. But I do know that these firemen give what they have. I was fortunate, I live in a, a small town, but we did have a regular fire department with everybody hired. So, when you look at what you do with Sugar Hill, I would ask you to consider, as much as anything, the response time for that first responder to get to that fire with the hope that you might be able to salvage some of the damage. I was, I don't know how old I was, I was about 40 when this fire happened, and I can tell you, a fire is one of the most devastating things you can experience. It takes without discrimination. I had pictures of relatives still in the old curved glass frames. Gone. My dog, gone. So, I think when you look at a volunteer fire department, to me, okay, just as a regular citizen, I think one of the things we needed to look at is what we can do to provide that fire department with the response time for the area to hopefully result in those damage. It was not a pleasant experience, it was one that I had a very difficult time dealing with, losing basically everything. My children had no left, toys left in the attic to be given to their children, and you don't think of that until you have gone through it. Those things were in the attic, they were just going to be there whenever we got ready for me to hand them down to the grandchildren. That never happened. So, when you look at this, I don't think it's just a, a one, and I, I don't know much about what's going on here. I'm just talking about the effect of a fire and having the convenience of a department that can make the best response. Just please consider that when you make your decision.
Are you a Sugar Hill resident?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I live in, kind of, I have a Pittsburgh mailbox address that, or Pittsburgh mailing address, but I'm actually in Titus-
In the county.
Yeah, right off of 46th Avenue. Anyway, I appreciate you taking time to listen to me.
And tell, tell me your name once more.
Gwen Burkett.
Burkett, Burkett. Thank you, Ms. Burkett. And Ms. Burkett, just so, I, I'll spend 30 seconds just telling you, the, the county does pay the Mount Pleasant Fire Department, which is a, a professional group of paid firefighters. We pay them nearly a million dollars a year on behalf of the county to provide fire protection for Titus County. And they in turn work in conjunction with our individual volunteer fire departments. So, we are seriously committed to fire protection out in the county, to the tune of about a million dollars that we pay a professional department. And we also, not nearly to that extent, provide financial support to these individual volunteer fire departments. And the idea is that we do have local representation in these regions, but we also have the backup muscle with equipment, training, et cetera, from the Mount Pleasant Fire Department.
I think I understand that fully. My, you know, if you have a small fire and you have hose and you can put it out by yourself, that's wonderful. But one of the things that I learned through my own experience is the rapidity with which that first responder can get there and start working on the fire. That's the only reason for my comment. It had nothing to do with complaints. I have no complaints. I, here in Mount Pleasant, I just felt, I'm here and that I needed to say that, because I think that, just like a first responder, someone has a part of that. That first responder is critical, and sometimes that, that long hose could be the thing that keeps it from going through. And I just felt like the, I can't think of the word I'm looking for, the distance that the fire departments have to travel could make the difference. And if, if so, I don't know, I grew up in a small town, smaller, much smaller than this, and we had a volunteer fire department, had very good, as far as I know, very good reputation for doing that. But these were my personal things, not a special fire department or anybody that's running yet or going yet. It's just the effect it can have on you and how critical the decision you guys have to make is. That is, that's my-
Thank you, Ms. Burkett. All right, who, who would like to speak? Okay. Well, anybody in this room can say something. Let us bring you a mic over there, how about that? We've got these portable mics. You're our emcee today. I have to do extra today, Barbara?
My name is Pam Posey. I'm Wesley Vandiver's daughter, and he was a member of the Sugar Hill Fire Department. He died at the scene of the fire because, from what we understand, the Mount Pleasant Fire Department was told not to help the Sugar Hill Fire Department. And he was trying to get his pumper truck to work, and he was running from front to back, trying to get it to, to work properly, and it, he never could get it started. Talco Fire Department got there, and a man and a woman went and helped my daddy get his truck going. And as they walked off, he fell to the ground, and somebody said, "Man down." My dad had had a heart attack. And they took him to the hospital, and my dad died that night because he stretched out his heart. If anybody knows, listening to my dad, he did everything 90 miles an hour. That was his pace. It was never slow, it was always fast. But we were told that we probably had a lawsuit. We could sue the county, we could sue the Mount Pleasant Fire Department and everything because no one helped my dad, because they had been told, "Don't help Sugar Hill." I don't know if that was true or not. All I know is I lost my daddy that night because nobody helped him. And so, I think what this is all about really is the fire departments need to work together. And I was told that Chief McCray was the emergency coordinator, and that it was his job to coordinate all of the fire departments, but instead he had said, "Don't help Sugar Hill." Well, if that's true, he doesn't- Well, if that's true, he doesn't need to be the county coordinator. I, you know, I wasn't there. I don't know what happened. I was just told, "You have a lawsuit." A lawsuit's not going to burn my daddy's ass. But it's time for everybody to work together. If Chief McRae cannot work with the volunteer fire department, he doesn't need to be in his position. And so I wasn't there that night, but there were people who were there, and they said, "Mount Pleasant Fire Department would not help your daddy" because they were told, "Don't help Sugar Hill." I don't know what's wrong with Sugar Hill. I don't know why everybody thinks you ought to get rid of Sugar Hill. All I know is, if you're going to have a Sugar Hill Fire Department, work with them. Don't refuse to do something because you don't like Sugar Hill or whatever. But the thing is, if Mr. McRae is going to be the emergency coordinator, if he's going to be the Mount Pleasant Fire Chief, he'll work with all of the fire departments. I don't want to sue, they told me I could sue the county commissioners. I could sue Mr. McRae. I could sue the Mount Pleasant Fire Department. I was so hurt that night. I stood there as they brought my daddy to the hospital from having a heart attack because nobody would help him until Talco got there. And so I think it's time for all of this to just stop. And if the county is actually going to help the volunteer fire departments, help them. Don't ever, once in a while, keep throwing in, "We're going to get rid of these volunteer fire departments." And let Mr. McRae know, "You're going to back the volunteer fire departments also," or "You're not going to have a job." Because I lost my daddy. And I'll admit, I'm 64 years old, and I'm a daddy's girl, and I miss him every day. But I was told I lost him because nobody would help him. Mount Pleasant stood there and watched him try to get his truck going, but they were told, "Don't do anything." And I just want to say, to me, that was very unprofessional, and it should not happen to anybody. And so if you're going to have volunteer fire departments, Mount Pleasant needs to back them and not pick and choose who you're going to back. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Well, I think you've gotten bad information, is what I think.
I don't know, but it's just...
Well, I think you've gotten bad information, and that's unfortunate. And obviously, you're upset about it, but I don't believe that that's, any of that is correct.
That didn't come from a commissioner that was on site.
All right. Yes, sir. Chief Eubanks.
I've been volunteering in Titus County since '92, been paid since '96 in Mount Pleasant. I have never been told not to help the county fire department, ever. If anything was said out there, it would have been, "Sugar Hill was having problems with their truck. Get our truck in service." Mount Pleasant has never not helped. And I've talked to the guys that were on scene. They didn't know your dad was on the ground till they came back around and Talco was working on him. They didn't see him. I promise. Matter of fact, I had a couple that did end up over there helping with him at that point in time. I'm not saying we need to shut down any fire department. I'm never going to say we need to shut down a fire department, but we need participation from all of them. I'm chief at Nortex. I'll speak on behalf of Nortex right now. I miss calls. The last month or so, I've missed a lot of calls from my department that's out there. I've had two since November that we didn't have anybody respond to at all. That's the life of being a volunteer. I think in Mount Pleasant, I'll speak as that. I mean, we send extras above what the contract says we're going to send out, or the agreement says we're going to send out on every call. Because of the fact we know that, it's not any, I mean, it's Talco's having problems, Five Star, Argo, we all have problems getting people to respond to the call. We have to depend on the other. I just think everybody's got to look back and see, is it really what we need to be doing as volunteers? What do we need to better ourselves? What can we do to better ourselves? I'm not getting any members at Nortex. All of us are getting older. I've got a couple, my son and a couple of younger ones, that are going to have to start carrying the load. But the whole, the volunteer organization themselves overall are getting to be older. As far as response times go, I'm going to say, with exception of Talco and maybe TriLakes, 95% of the time, Mount Pleasant beats us to the call. Very rarely are we first on scene at Nortex unless I happen to be sitting at the fire station and get up and respond. If I'm coming from the house or coming from anywhere else, the Mount Pleasant truck's going to be there first. Even going to Sugar Hill, I've beat Sugar Hill there on numerous occasions. I mean, they do get there first at times, but I've beat them there on numerous occasions on calls. But it's, we're at the fire station 24/7. We're dressed. We're ready to go. Where if I'm a volunteer and I'm sitting down to eat supper, or I just gotten, got laid down in bed, I've got to get dressed, drive the three, four, five, sometimes 10 miles to the fire station to get a truck. So there's lots of flaws in the volunteer systems out there, and there's no way to correct some of those. No matter how hard we try, we're never going to fix all the problems that are in our volunteer fire departments. It's not just Titus County. Other counties are going through it right now. Morse County's got a meeting tomorrow night, I believe. They've got a department that's talking about shutting down because they've got two active members. They can't get anybody else to show up and help. So it's all over this area that it's happening. But I can promise, we've never been told not to help a fire department. I still send the exact same amount of equipment to Sugar Hill, or Talco, or TriLakes that I'm going to send to any call. We may turn around and limit them out when John, or Marcus, or whoever gets there and says, "Hey, all we need is one more truck, and we've got this." I'll turn trucks around, be ready for the next call. But I'm going to go and help at every call that we go on. And Chief McRae, or any of the commissioners, nobody has ever told us not to assist at a fire or with someone that's having problems at that fire. I can promise that.
I'll say the same thing, Brad, that we have never told anybody not to help a Sugar Hill or anybody else. As Chief Eubanks said, we go above and beyond what we're required to do. Every year since I've been chief, for the 37 years I've been chief, we have provided more response to the county than we're required to. And we will still do that as long as I'm the chief. As far as the training that Mr. Vandiver talked about, I can't make those people come. We are providing everything we can to make every volunteer fire department as viable as it can be, but it's up to them to take advantage of the training. Now, as far as response in Sugar Hill, from November of 20 till April 8th, Sugar Hill's missed about 73% of the calls they've been dispatched to. Now, why? I don't know. But that's the facts. I give you all the facts every other month. Those don't support exactly what you've been told by the chief of the Sugar Hill Fire Department. Now, that's all I can say is, the facts I'm giving you speak for themselves. You know, we're going to do the best we can to make them as viable as possible, but compared to the other volunteer departments, again, which we track, Sugar Hill is at the lowest as far as being able to perform. They've been working on it for 10 months. And as I stated in the presentation I gave you all last, you know, we've worked with them. We've done everything we can. It's up to them to participate. But 10 months have gone by, and they're no better off than they were 10 months ago. In fact, they're worse. So I don't know what else to say about that. But, you know, we tried to help, you know, the death benefits for Mr. Vandiver, who did you all get the help from to get your benefits? Was it Sugar Hill? Was it Mount Pleasant? We did everything we could to make sure that, and with TriLakes, the firefighter we lost out there, which Brad, Eubanks was instrumental in getting all the benefits for those families. So that's all I got to say.
All right. Last call. I've got, this gentleman right here is going to come up first. Are you leaving or speaking?
I'm trying not to break this. As you all have known, I've stayed pretty quiet over the last year. During the whole period of time, I did stay in close touch with you, Judge. I stayed in close touch with Chief McRae. I stayed in close touch with the county attorney. Nothing I did during the period of time was done without their notification. So I was not the wild person going around trying to shut down the Sugar Hill Fire Department. The fact I want to bring about is the air trailer. It was not a Texas Forest Service grant. It was a FEMA federal regional grant. We got the grant because we stated that air trailer would not only serve as Titus County, it would serve as all the surrounding counties. The only way you can get a regional grant is if you say you're servicing more than what you've, your own personal county. When the topic came up in January of last year, it was brought up to a vote of the Sugar Hill volunteer membership. I did not bring up the topic. I only went along with what the membership was asking. And at the time, Michelle, myself, and Sidney Derrick were the only three that were operating the air trailer. I'm 74 years old. I was looking to downgrade my responses. So I went along with taking the air trailer out of service in Sugar Hill. But before we did that, we contacted FEMA and asked them what was the correct procedure of moving an item from the federal government's inventory. We also contacted most of the volunteer fire departments to see if they had room in their fire departments for the air trailer and the truck that pulled it. And again, the truck belongs to the county. We couldn't find a home for it other than Mount Pleasant. So when I talked to Chief McRae, would he be willing to take on the air trailer so that the air trailer would go to 100% of the calls, 100% of the time, because it carries air that supports the lives of our firefighters? He agreed that he would take on the air trailer and house it. I went back to the membership, told them what we had found, and as I reported in our daily journal to you, Judge, we made that decision that night to move the air trailer to Mount Pleasant. Being a 501(c)(3), which all volunteer fire departments must adhere to, means that you can only give a piece of gear from your fire department to a like entity. Same thing as cash, same thing as anything that involves that volunteer fire department. The state is the watchdog for volunteer fire departments, even though you say that you like to stay out of their business, and the commissioner court does not want to be part of the volunteer fire department business. You don't have to worry about it because the state is. If you are a 501(c)(3) member, and all fire departments in Titus County are, you are governed by the state of Texas on what you can do and what you can't do. And they have a very strict code that if you violate it, it is mandatory jail sentence. We understood that when we were trying to take the department down. Do it correctly. Do it according to the state. Again, I have stayed quiet. I didn't want to stir up anything, but sometimes you've got to set the facts straight. Thank you.
Just for clarification, you did attempt to transfer that air trailer to other VFDs, and did they, for whatever reason, decline? Is that what I understood?
It actually, it was granted to Titus County, but it was granted to Titus County on a regional purpose. So the proper way of disposing it or transferring it would have been a department in Titus County. So that's what we tried to do.
Yeah, but did they all decline, or they just weren't able, or what do you think was the reason that it didn't end up in the hands of another volunteer department?
Mostly because they couldn't make the trailer operate 24/7, 365. In other words, the whole purpose behind us getting that air trailer was to provide air support to firefighters in need. And if you don't have that trailer on site...
That imposes an obligation on a department to be at every event.
Yes.
And they just weren't able to say, "We can be there regularly enough to justify housing it at our complex."
Not every department had a, Michelle and I, that were dedicated 100% to making calls. And it's hard to find a department that has someone dedicated that you can make 100% of the calls, 100% of the time. And it even got to a point where, when Michelle and I were the last two that were making that trailer run, if we had to leave town for a certain period of time, we actually took the trailer down to Mount Pleasant, and they operated it in our absence. So it's...
So it makes sense for it to be at the Mount Pleasant Fire Department because they are going to be in attendance at every event.
It made perfectly good sense to everybody involved, so that's the reason it was done.
Thank you for clarifying. All right. Last call. Thank you, every one of you, for, yes, ma'am, Ms. Bennett.
I just don't want to leave this meeting thinking that I came in just to create some havoc. I don't know anything about this. So anything I said was not a judgment call. It was not any kind of criticism. It was a personal experience that I asked, that all I asked is you take it into consideration when you're making your decisions. I'm going to live here, hopefully, for quite a while. I'm not sure. And I just don't want to leave this meeting thinking that I'm here or here. I am from Mount Pleasant and Titus County because that's where I live. But, so nothing was said that was in any way of criticism or judgment call. I don't know anything about running a fire department. I just know that when we need them, we need them, and that's what I think you guys are trying to provide for us, for everyone, whether it's Sugar Hill, Mount Pleasant, Pittsburgh, or wherever. So I just didn't want to leave feeling that I had been too judgmental at all. That was not. It was an emotional appeal. That's all.
I think they applauded for you, so that...
I didn't hear that.
Well, they did. Do it again. All right. Marcus, you want to talk?
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. For the people that don't know me, my name's Marcus Williams. I'm a volunteer firefighter here in Titus County on Cookeville, and five-star assistant chief at Cookeville. For our two departments, I'm going to speak out and say, "We cannot man that trailer." We were asked to before. There was a time, two or three years ago, when Mr. Clark, I think, had knee surgery or something and was going to be out. Sugar Hill at that time brought truck, trailer, and all to Mount Pleasant so it'd be centrally located. They invited all the volunteer departments to come get trained on that trailer. Several of us went and took training that Jerry gave us, showing us all the aspects of that trailer and what to do and what not to do. That trailer is currently being pulled 90% of the time by a Mount Pleasant volunteer. He's still a volunteer firefighter in Titus County. Mount Pleasant, if he's not around, then Mount Pleasant does bring that trailer. There's probably a handful of us, and I would need to redo it because I hadn't done it in a while, but my kids, they've been to fires and helped. I mean, that's what the girls like to do. They want to do something like that at a fire. They're not going to go in and fight a structure fire, but they want to help however they can. And that's one of the things that they do and want to know more about, is that air trailer and operating that air trailer. I know Jessica was at a fire with one of the paid firemen here a couple of months ago, and he told her, "If you'll just write this stuff down, I'll fill it." But we've got to be able to get this information off every bottle we fill, and you check the tags, you do this. That was a big help to him because then all he had to do was worry about filling the bottles and getting them back in service. So that trailer is at a good location, being in Mount Pleasant. The truck right now, I believe, is a city truck, so it's limited to who can drive that truck, but at one time, any volunteer could go get that truck. And I think if it come down to... And I think if it come down to, nobody was there to get it and it had to go, McCray would tell me to get in that truck and go. There's never been a problem with that. As far as Chief McCray, being Emergencies Manager Coordinator, you're not gonna find a better man for Titus County. He's dedicated his life to the fire department here. And have we always seen eye to eye? No, we hadn't. I was a volunteer for him for 10-plus years. But he's a good firefighter, he's a good chief, and he's a great county coordinator. And I don't believe he ever would say, "Don't help somebody," because he's never told any of us that. We all work together. The departments around here are all working together. We're doing the best we can with what we have. Saturday evening, some of us from Cookeville went out of town. Took four or five people with me, whether it's all my family or dating my family. Cookeville was unable to make a call because we were in Texaco for a birthday party. Sometimes you're not gonna make a call. But 90% of the time, at least one or two people can make calls for most of our departments in this county. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Judge, I'd like to say one other thing. I was talking to a guy last week, and I, he kept telling me, "Well, I heard this and I heard that." I think that's where a lot of our problem is coming from, is hearsay. People are telling things that, that they might think is right, but it's not. If you hear something about anything like that, go to the source. Don't, don't carry the hearsay to somebody else. Just take it and, and make sure you know before you tell anybody else. Because once you, once you tell it to one, then somebody else is gonna tell it, somebody else is gonna tell it, and it just keeps ballooning from there. So, just know what you're telling before you, before you go out and say anything.
Thank you. All right, this is, uh, this is an item that I did allow for action. Commissioner Applewhite, again, is not here. I did talk to him about this issue, and as I, if I can attempt to quote him, I believe he said something like, "As long as they are trying and as long as they are putting forth an effort to get trained and attend events, I am supportive of the continuing to financially support the Sugar Hill Fire Department." So, is there any action to come out of this item?
Well, several months ago, we, uh, we voted to leave Sugar Hill alone, and it was passed unanimously. I think we need to stick with that decision and let Sugar Hill be.
I'm making a motion, we take no action at this time. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fitch that we take no action.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Parchman. Any further discussion? Uh, my only discussion is thank you to everyone who participated, who showed up, who spoke, who expressed an opinion. I think we heard a lot of information here today. Thank you to the members of the Sugar Hill Fire Department that are making the calls, that are getting trained. It's tough to be the one that, you know, that responsibility falls on event after event. And I know who you guys are, and we may not have the numbers in that department yet, but there are a few in there that are, have been very reliable, and I appreciate you for that. It sounds like this court supports continuing to give this department some time. I hope that Chief Grubbs will be able to start attending the chiefs' meetings. I think that's an excellent opportunity to mend relationships and to build toward the future. And that's what I hope will happen. But nonetheless, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, thank you. You're welcome to continue to sit and listen. We've got a few more things to take care of.
Thanks, Jerry, for clearing all that up, man.
Bye, Michelle. Tell me your name one more time. I know that name. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Are, are you related? How are you related to Carrie? That's one.
Oh, okay.
She's still building? She's still building?
Thank y'all.
Thanks, ladies. Still work out? Stay big and strong?
Thank you, Taylor. Thank y'all. I've known your dad a long time. He and your mom were faithful customers of mine at El Chico for many years. That's one fine set of folks. And I'm sorry for your loss. I'm sure you did. Like a lot of people do. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Appreciate you. I know it. You're gonna see him somewhere, you know, it's just like today. It's weird.
Thank you, Ms. Posey.
He was a jewel. Always loved running.
All right, uh, call us back into order so we can get through this meeting. The next item we have on the agenda is item number five, and discuss the hiring of an Assistant Elections Administrator with an associated salary increase for that position with possible action. And Pam is gonna explain to you here what's going on and what she feels like she needs. So, all welcome to the podium. Pam Holmes, our Chief Elections Administrator.
Thank you, Judge. I, um, sadly, I am forced to come before you. Not, not that I don't like saying hello, but my current Elections Administrator Assistant is, has told me that her last day would be the end of June. So, I need to get her replaced, and so I am in the process of advertising for a replacement and have an interview set up for this afternoon, and I hope to get three more in place this week.
And just for the record, your assistant's name is?
Debbie Hinahosa.
Debbie has been a faithful employee of yours now for how long?
Uh, just over two years.
Two years.
Mm-hmm. And she has learned a lot in that space of time, and it's a, it's a lot to learn. I know that people have the misconception that in between elections, we don't have a lot to do, but that is entirely a misconception. And if you want to find anything out, just drop by the office and see what we're doing that day.
Any specific reason why she's leaving?
Uh, um, she, she does not have to work for a living, but her and her husband are moving closer to retirement. I would say this is more of a retirement than just leaving the workforce. So, um, anyway, our current budget does cover her current wage. The wage threshold's been creeping upwards in this area, I think you may be aware. So, to attract the talent that I need, we need to take a realistic approach to hiring someone new. And up until now, two people have been running the office, but I have to say, it has been a challenge, um, at times, especially when we have bigger elections. And we did hire some seasonal work for the November of 2020 election. We've got midterms coming up the end of this year. We've got two more elections next month. So, this has been a busy election year. All that to say that with new legislative changes, our processes have changed drastically, and there's, there's always a learning curve that you have to take in with all of that and the extensive reporting because we're, so, elections is so under the microscope right now with the political atmosphere. So, we might have to still have our part-time help, and I wanna keep that in a budget. Currently, we are budgeted for a part-time person, and we have not used that yet. So, I am in the process of hiring a replacement, but I'll have an overlap during about two months' time period. I hope that we're gonna be able to train the new person, and Debbie will be an active part in that. And, um, um, so to address the overlap and then to try to get the new person in with a competitive wage, I'd like to request a budget increase to cover a wage increase, depending on the experience of the person that I find that might be a good fit for us.
Can you tell us where we are and where you think you need to be to get the individual that you need?
Currently, my budget covers up to a 14-hour, a $14-an-hour wage. I would like to see an increase to cover a range between $15 and $17 an hour, depending on the person's expertise and experience with elections.
How much overlap time do you think you might need where you would have a total of three people in the office?
Two months. Possibly only a month and a half because if I get a person that's currently in a job situation, they're gonna wanna give a two-week notice at their current job.
All right. What's, what, what's it gonna take in the way of a budget adjustment to accomplish this in this calendar year? I mean, in this fiscal year?
If we were to increase the budget at a five, five months at $17 an hour, that's just over $14,000. Of course, we, that's get us to the next fiscal year.
But, but you'll be losing Debbie at the end of June?
Exactly.
So, that comes back off of there for July, August, and September.
Uh-huh. And she currently makes, uh, almost $2,000 a month.
So, have you calculated up what the net need is through the end of September?
Uh, no, I have not. I can give that for you, though.
But you said five months at 17, which is at the high end?
At the high end.
Was how much more, 14,000?
$14,733.
So, we get a partial credit back for Debbie's pay for the months of July, August, and September?
Yes.
That's about $2,000 a month, $6,000, so max net of about $8,000 plus benefits. Anything else? And Alfred, where's Alfred? I hadn't forgotten you. I know you wanna speak on this. Commissioners, any questions here for Barbara that I think Alfred Flanagan may, may wanna ask a question or make a comment? Before that, anybody have a question for Pam regarding this situation? Okay. Alfred, would you like to speak?
First, I'd like to say that if any of my facts are wrong, feel free to correct me and make me feel right at home, you know, so. You know, and this is the first time I've laid eyes on our administrator. I don't have a need to go to the administrator's office as far as voting. It's all done online, I mean, through the mail or online, I guess nowadays, a lot of it. I do have a couple of concerns. The administration office, if I remember correctly, started out with three people. Is that correct?
It, it has been for many years.
And now we've gone to two. And if the truth be known, it could probably go to one with some part-time help during the election year. And I, if I stand to be corrected on this, but I think we contract with an outside source to take care of the voter registration. Is that correct?
No, we do not have a voter registration.
Okay, do we contract with anybody to do outside of work?
No.
Okay. So, there's no budget in there for registration outside of our local office? I think at one time, and it, maybe with the administration, the way it's set up, the responsibilities fall differently nowadays than when the county clerk and the tax assessor collector was responsible for the elections and the registration. But I guess my concern is maybe, uh, we have an administrator whose primary residence is out of state. And it sometimes raises the question in my mind, as a taxpayer, if you live out of state, how often will you be in the office? Or do you feel like that everything can be done over the internet or Zoom nowadays? If that's the case, I think that's a misconception. I think we need people locally that are running our elections office. And Jimmy made a comment earlier about the fire department, that it's the Commissioner's Court's responsibility to look after the county's money responsibly. And I think that's true here as well. It's interesting to me that the Commissioner's Court, in their budgeting process a few years, uh, this past year, was, um, concerned about one of the elected officials who wanted only $100 a month more for auto expense, and they weren't able to get that. But now we're considering approximately $4,000 a year more for part-time help, or not part-time help, but an additional pay for some help in the administration office. And maybe sometimes, uh, we need an assistant or need additional help if we're not going to be able to be there all the time. So, I've raised a couple of concerns. If I'm wrong about that, then I stand to be corrected. Also, I think there's $300 a month in travel. Is that correct?
Is that, is that the amount?
And so, from the office, what traveling has to be done during the day for, on the 300, to warrant $300 a month?
Often, we have to go out with the county to check on residential addresses to make sure the voters are registering their residential address and not under a property address. Also, there's many towns that we have to go out and visit the public places of the county.
Maybe the Commissioners work on a per-mile basis. Maybe that's something that you could look at for the elections officer.
Well, we haven't complete, we haven't completely made that policy in effect throughout the county. There are still several departments that have a fixed monthly amount. We've talked about that before. You know, $300 a month is fairly minimal. As you know, the Elections Board, or I'm not sure, what's the technical term for the entity that hired you? I can't even remember. Election Commission. We've discussed the issue that you brought up with, with Pam living technically out of state. Since that decision... Okay. Essentially, she...
What's technical?
Well, again, that, that, that particular situation was seriously considered by that commission, and as it stands right now, after this election, which will be at the end of the runoff election, we will regather to decide, is this situation working? Although I think Pam's been here virtually the whole time since then, there, she hasn't really gotten to experience much life, you know, living in Oklahoma, but we've...
But we've been at elections.
But what?
We've had elections during this time period.
Yeah, no, that's true. But I just want you to know, there is a timeline on this. This is not an indefinite deal that was agreed to. So, there will be a reconvening of that group to discuss, how did the elections go? Have we suffered anything negative as a result of Pam having another residence in Oklahoma? And the decision will be made then to continue this, or possibly, I guess it's conceivable they would say, "No, this didn't work. We don't wanna continue this." Then she will be given possibly the option to continue into the November election, and I personally strongly hope that she will be here, and I strongly hope... And I strongly hope that this commission will allow her to complete that November election. But the group was in agreement that by the end of the calendar year, we did want somebody in that position that did live full-time in the county. So this is not carte blanche forever and ever. It's going to be that way.
Are those committee hearings open to the public?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So do y'all have to post agenda items on that, just like you do other meetings?
Well, I think that we should. And I don't know that we have every time before. You know, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but we probably will this next time. Seems to be some interest in it.
But your budgeting starts this summer for that calendar year.
That's true.
So wouldn't a decision need to be made so you'd know how to budget?
Well, I still think there's going to be the same number of people in that department. I don't think that's a one-person department by a long shot. And so I think that when budget time comes along, yeah, we'll have to factor in some maybe cross-training time or something like that. But I think eventually, we're still going to have an elections administrator and an assistant.
Okay. I just wanted to be heard on this.
Good comments, as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, comments, questions? What would you like to do here regarding Pam's request?
I think we need to table it till, till the, re-up on October for the budget.
Till what?
Till October, when the budget is re-upped. I don't think we need to take any action on it right now.
Okay.
On the raise part of it.
So basically, what you're saying is Pam, we're going to limit you to the current $14 to find that replacement.
I think it's fair for right now.
Okay. Would you say that if most of our, yeah, would you say that it's going to be tougher to hire somebody at that rate now under the current inflationary period that we're in and just looking at what salaries and wages have done here in the last year? That's my concern, and I think that's Pam's concern, is I'm not sure that you can attract the same talent at that rate. I could be wrong, but I don't think so, and that's why I'm willing to support her request. But that's, and that's my only reason.
Right.
And I think that she's also got to be thinking about the quality of this individual. I'm just going to speculate that she's thinking, you know, maybe about a long-term replacement for herself, and she wants to start off with somebody that might conceivably be able to fill the top position at some point.
Well, I'm not saying I won't consider it when it comes time in October. I just think we need to get somebody there and make sure they're going to stay, and then possibly they'll think and get a raise upcoming in the future, like that four months from now, four, five months.
Well, I'm just afraid that may hamstring her on being able to hire a person with the talent that she needs. But I certainly respect what you have to say. So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We table it till it comes to October.
Are you going to give her some ability to have some overlapping training time?
Is it in your budget to do that? Do you have?
No, it's not. I'm budgeted to have one full-time assistant and one part-time person. We've not utilized our part-time budget for this year as of yet. Not saying we won't need it a little bit further down the line. But yes, it's the, I understand if you want to table it until the next budgetary meetings, but we do need some overlapping training period. It's not something you can just jump into.
And how much would that satisfy you, I mean, overlapping cost?
Two months at the new wage.
I mean, do you have that, I mean, what the figures are on that overlapping cost?
So two months at $2,000 a month. $2,000 a month, so $4,000.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
Well, I would be considering to do that right there. That's not a problem. I mean, you know, to get your training, the people you need trained, that's fine with me. I mean, I think that's a good idea.
And that's probably a longer training period than a lot of our positions would normally entail. So I do want to, want you to make note of that. You know, two months of training is a pretty good while, but if Pam thinks that's what's necessary, I'm going to assume she can, you know, like you said, it may not be till the second week of May or middle of May before that person can start. It may turn out to be six or seven weeks by the time somebody gives notice. Okay, so you would, you would support keeping the wage held at 14 for now, but giving her up to two months of training time at that current wage?
Yes.
Okay. That's a motion?
It's a motion.
All right. Is there a second, or do we continue this discussion?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Parker. Discussion. Once again, I think that you're, this is, this is an important position. I think we've gone in a department from three people traditionally down to two people. Whether three was overstaffed or not, I think you've got a mighty high-quality staff of two people at this time, and I would sure like to maintain that quality of staff. And I personally believe that we've seen some very real wage increases in this community, and I think we need to give her a little bit more flexibility on that so that she can hire somebody solid. We're going into a big election here in November, and we have had significant increases in the number of voters vote in our elections in recent years. Any other discussion? All in favor of Jeff's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll be opposed to that one. Pam, thanks for your presentation. I hope that you can find a real Jim. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have covered item number six. We'll jump now to item number seven. Commissioner Parchman, tell us about culvert work at 108 County Road 1046.
Well, it's an area out on County Road 1046 where three culverts all come together, and it dumps a lot of water on this resident, and it's causing a lot of erosion. And the people before her had had it where they had put a small pipe in the ground. They built a little retaining wall, and it's caused issues. It stopped up. It causes water to build up and back up on another person's property across the road, so it's causing a lot of issues. So I'm proposing, I want to get permission to get on this person's property and hire a concrete contractor to come in and pour what I call either a flume or a bee so many feet in there so it'll stop all this erosion and it'll get the water from point A to point B, and next you'll be happy, and then everybody else in the neighborhood will be happy too. So it won't cause any more flooding and it'll stop erosion of the property.
What's, is it affecting your roads also?
Well, yes, it causes potholes. It causes everything, you know, soft spots in the road. And, well, like I say, when you get a big flood, I mean, it goes back into this other person's property probably 50 or 60 feet, and it takes forever for it to drain on.
Okay. So not only are you getting some, making your residents there a little happier, you're preventing continual repair and maintenance to your roads?
I'm fixing two prompts at the same time, I'll take care of it.
And you've got budgeted money to do this, you just want permission to work on private property?
Yes, I've already got the price from it, and it's a very, it's a very fair price. It's not a whole, we're not talking a whole lot of money, and it'll last for now on. So I entertain the idea of putting a culvert in there and running it all the way through her property, but once I did that, it would cost twice as much money, and plus where the end of the culvert would be, it would dump on another person's property, so I'd have another problem there as well.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion that we, allow me on this property on 108 County Road 1046 to pour at least 100 foot of concrete to stop an erosion problem.
And get, and get on private property to do that?
And get on private property. It'll be a contractor doing it. My guys won't be on that property unless we have to haul something up.
Yeah, but we'll be spending money that benefits private property.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Got a motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Jeff. Item number eight, consider and possibly approve the purchase of a new iron-bull trailer for precinct four. Commissioner Parker?
Do y'all know Dana and I went together last year and bought a steel-wheel packer. That packer is too heavy for the trailers that we are currently using. In fact, I had mine in the shop last week getting the axle put back under it, so the hangers on the springs broke, and it's a lot due to that. I have looked at this trailer, and I have got an old trailer that I had been toying with the idea of getting rid of anyway, and they told me that they would take it in as a trade-in for this other trailer. This has got 12,000-pound axles under it with electric brakes on both and 14-ply tires. It's a good, heavy trailer, and I'm just asking permission to purchase this trailer. It's going to be $24,100, and I do have the money in my butt to pay for it.
Motion by Commissioner Parker to purchase a $24,100 heavy-duty trailer to carry the steel-wheel roller.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Comments, questions, discussion?
I have a question, Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Jimmy, you had mentioned to me that you were thinking about doing a trade-in. Are you going to trade in one?
Yes, yes. I'm going to trade my old one in. I didn't get the numbers off of it yet, but I will get them to you today.
Okay, so $24,100 is the new one, less whatever the trade-in?
That's with the trade-in. It's $27,000 even, and then the $3,000 trade-in.
Okay, we need to, yeah, we need to clarify that.
I'm sorry. I didn't, wasn't thinking about that, but it is.
So that's a net price of 24,100 with the trade-in of what?
1996, 24-foot, and this is a 32-foot trailer.
Trading in a 1990, what was it?
96, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to look and see for sure, but.
A 1990's model 24-foot trailer will be part of this trade to yield a net purchase price of 24,100.
But 27 is the price of the new one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we want to make sure we get that. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I'm glad you brought that up. I didn't even think about, think about that when I started, started.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's get some report on roadwork status. Commissioner Parker?
We've been putting in some culverts. We've had several people that have called here the last couple of weeks about wanting culverts installed, and we've been installing them and trying to do, we've got a couple of roads that we've been doing some work on to getting the bases back. We had some soft spots in them, getting them back, getting ready to start doing some seal coating, not seal coating, but some scavenging on those roads. And we spent part of the week, last week, trying to get some trees down. We had several dead trees that was on our right-of-way that, they were, had started dropping a lot of limbs and whatnot, and so they, we have been in the process of doing that. In fact, Sheriff's Department called a while ago and said that there was another one down out here, so I had to text the guy and told him, go get it. So had a lot of, a lot of trees that started coming down since the leaves got on and the waters, they're taking on water and all. We've been taking a lot of, a lot of trees down, so that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitch?
We replaced a culvert that caved in on 1070 and reworked some of the drainage ditches, and we re, we dug out a soft spot, filled that back in. On 1220, we replaced a culvert that caved in and went back and covered that up and paved over it. Also, on 1220, we cleaned the bridge off from flooding through the heavy rains and all kinds of debris. A lot of big trees had stopped up the box, box culvert bridge out there, cleaned that up. On 2850, we cleaned out some ditches and some problem areas after the flooding and did some paving and worked on that drainage at the end of 2850. We also had several trees down the last week or two during storms. Today, we had a tree, possible few trees on 2600, and we've been dealing with some dumping here lately. We had to go out and clean up people's, hauling off shingles and buildings and all kind of things that would just be dumped on a dead-end road or on the side of the road, so we dealt with that a few days. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Parchman?
We're still working on County Road 1455. We've been doing, still quite a bit of side cutting. There's been some roads we've been scavenging and cleaning up quite a few trees due to the storms and high winds, and cleaning out lots of culverts that's been stopped up with leaves and debris due to the storms and well flooding.
Thank you. All right. What are you here for, sir?
I'm sorry. Number 12.
Okay, well, that's what I was afraid of. I'm going to jump to you, and I would have done that earlier, but I'm just now sitting going, I kind of know why everybody else is here, but I don't know why you're here. Well, let me, let me bump you up ahead of these others, and not that I'm trying to run you off, but if you've got other places to be, you've been patiently sitting here for two hours. So I'm going to call this gentleman and give me your name.
Dawson, David Dawson.
David, come on up to the podium, and I'm going to pull up here all the documents that you have brought to us. I am jumping down to item number 12, consider and possibly approve the replat of Peninsula's subdivision lots 96 and 97, and we want to make them one lot now. 96R, do I have that title correctly?
That's correct.
96 replat. And so we've done these before where we take previously subdivided areas and we say, no, we don't need those separate lots anymore. We're going to bring them back together. So I've got your documents here, but you tell us your son.
Okay. My wife and I have lived in the area for eight years. We live in the Peninsula subdivision, and I recently had the opportunity to buy the lot next door to me, which I've done, and my intent is just to keep somebody else from building right on top of me, but my lot's pretty narrow. I just want to make one big lot out of the two. I talked to Mr. Fitch about it one day on the phone. I don't know if you remember. I've been working with Ms. Simpson and with the environmental officer, Officer Bain, and I've pretty much got his blessings to it, and I didn't realize that this was the process, but I'm here today to get your approval. I live on Lot 97. The lot I purchased is next door to me, Lot 96. I've had it resurveyed and certified, and it's been, the surveyor chose to rename it Lot 96R, so that's what.
You're just ensuring that you've got, that you don't get crowded on your property, because you're right, that is pretty narrow. You take up pretty much the full width of your lot, and if somebody were to come in and do the same, you'd be looking at each other's bedroom windows.
That's, that's right. That's right. I've lived there for eight years without anybody right on top of me. It's just hard to think about having somebody that close, so I had the chance to buy it, and I just want to combine them. There are some advantages to me to do it. I don't know if I need to get in and all that. My neighborhood unfortunately has an HOA there. It's kind of a necessary evil, the way I look at it, but it is to protect, you know, the owners out there. But by combining the lots, it gives me some advantages long-term as far as the amount of dues that I have to pay to the HOA. My intent is to leave it one lot forever. There'll never be a house there. It's just strictly to give me some additional elbow room and not have a neighbor that close.
Now, do you really wish you didn't have an HOA?
I do. Well, as I said, they're necessary. Well, as I said, they're necessary. I'm glad we have them.
I might want to put a car lot next to you. I said, I might want to put a car lot next to you.
Right. Well, that's exactly why we need them.
I think you've got a very reasonable request here. I appreciate all the work that you've gone through here to get this done and see no reason why we shouldn't honor it.
I think it's a good idea. I think it'll look real nice and I don't have a problem with it. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Motion by Commissioner Parkman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you want to come back after we've had a chance to sign and seal these, fine. If not, it may be new. Because I've got to sign it, then the clerk's office has got to sign it.
Okay.
And we won't delay getting that done. And you're welcome to sit here or wait or come back. I can't promise, I can promise you, I'll sign mine pretty quick as soon as this meeting is over. But I can't say that for the clerk.
Okay. Could I just come back and see Ms. Simpson this afternoon then? Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Judge.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 10, consider and possibly select a grant administrator to assist the county with administration of the American Rescue Plan funds. We have two books here. Barbara was very diligent in putting out a request for qualifications to help us select. And we've had at least one of these guys staying in touch with us. Grant Works has been making regular calls. And Trailer Associates and Grant Works have submitted proposals to us. They're very detailed. They give you a lot of company information. And in addition to just responding to the RFQ, they've actually, I don't even think you asked for it, but they both gave dollar figures as to what they would charge the county to administer this grant we have to the $2.63 million. I personally was very surprised and pleased with how low they both were. Barbara's going to kind of give you some of her thoughts on this, the lesser level of thoughts of mine after she is done. You can't go wrong with either one of these guys. Whether your decision is based on their qualifications or not, you'd have a hard time downgrading either one of these. These are both very, very important companies. They're both going to be very big players in the ARP world. You've got one that's more a local, regional in Trailer Associates. You've got one that's a larger nationwide operation. And while Barbara is asking you, and I'm asking you today, to go ahead and make a selection on these two and to enable us to, you know, start working with one of these, if one of you would like to have some time to study these documents as well, we could always table this. We could table it till the end of the week, two weeks from now, a week from now, or whatever. But I've got a feeling both of y'all trust Barbara a whole lot. And you're going to listen carefully to what she has to say, and you're going to get a lot of comfort in what she has to say. So Barbara, I'm going to turn this discussion over to you and then I'll make a few brief comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I want to remind you that this was money that Titus County did not apply for. It came to counties and cities and other entities from the federal government. Judge Lee had to go in and I think you had to do facial recognition even to make sure that the money came to the right county. We've gotten one half of the $6.3 million. He'll have to do that again into May, first of June to get the other half of that. We've not made any decisions. I say we, it's not my decision to make, it's your decision to make. But Titus County has not made any decisions as to the use of these funds. That will be something that we need to do later. During the budget process, I brought to your attention the amount of record keeping that's required with grants like this from the federal government. If you'll recall, we did the coronavirus grant within our office. It was $786,000, and that was much less paperwork, yet we have a stack this tall. These initial requirements came with 27,000 pages. And I'll just tell you right out, I don't believe that there's anyone who can know this without concentrating just on this. I don't see how you could do other things and follow these requirements. There are some discussions out there that if a county gets less than $10 million, then you can take what's called a standard allowance. We're going to talk about that on the next item on the agenda. What that does for us is then we don't have to do the calculations to prove the loss. Does not have anything to do with how you actually decide to spend the money. So what we did is we did not rush into things. There are some counties, in my opinion, who've already been out spending money, giving money to employees for bonuses and different kinds of things like that. There may be some ways that you can do that. My recommendation is we wait until we get a grant administrator, someone who does this kind of work for a living to give us all those details. So in December, y'all suggested that we go ahead and go out for qualifications. Remember, we go out for qualifications for these because these are people with professional certifications. We did that. We got the results back in March. Judge Lee and I have read these things. We've been over them with the fine tooth comb. One of the requirements was that we had to evaluate them. We had to tell them how we're going to evaluate them. Then we had to evaluate them. I've done that. One is at a 99 and one is at a 98. The only difference is Grant Works is a much larger company. They have 350 employees. They're housed in Austin. Trailer and Associates is out of Tyler. They have fewer employees, but they also work with other counties in our area. If we are going to consider broadband, that might be something that we need to consider is what other counties are doing and how they're doing that. Does not require that we go with Trailer. But Trailer does have, they're more local, but to say one's better than the other, I can't say that. They are equally qualified, in my opinion. The only difference that I can see is with regard to their financial statements. Trailer is much larger firm, significantly more assets, but that doesn't mean that they're any better. It just means that they're larger. So my request today, and Judge Lee, I do want to tell you, Commissioners, I sent y'all an email last week and offered those things. If y'all wanted to come check them out, read them, look at them. It's a whole lot of reading to go through. And keep in mind, these are just the RFQs. This is just the response. You can imagine what the paperwork is that goes with grants like this. So the recommendation that I have for you is that we go with Trailer and Associates. They did include their estimate of what they would charge us. They want to charge us $190,000. Grant Works wants to charge us $253,000, I think, Judge Lee. So the firms, in my opinion, are equally qualified and the recommendation is to go with the lesser, the least lesser of the two cost.
Well, in my decision, well, first a couple of, just a couple of prior comments here. I do think that by waiting as long as we have waited, I think we've gotten the benefit of both of these companies having a better idea of what work was involved in administering these grants. I honestly think that the counties that jumped out there early probably are overpaying and I think that they, some of them even realize that. But there, you know, as each week goes by and we have more and more information from the federal government about these grants, which we'll discuss in the next agenda item, I think it equips companies like this to know, it's not going to take as much money as I thought because now I have a better idea of exactly the work that's going to be put into it. I think that the dollar consideration between these two entities is negligible on a $6.3 million grant. If I thought that Grant Works had even that much more edge over Trailer, I would be perfectly willing to pay them the dollar figure that they have asked for. I like Trailer Associates. I'm more familiar with that name. In fact, I really wasn't familiar with Grant Works. I have known about Trailer and Associates for many years. There's a lot of depth of experience in both of these companies. I like the fact that this is more a family oriented business. There is a gentleman by the name of Taylor who works for Trailer. Not to be confused, it's not that, you know, they're related. We have Gary Trailer, he's the chairman and CEO. And we have Mark Taylor, who is the president and chief operating officer. You also have Wesley Trailer as the vice president and chief financial officer. I think that maybe just because of the proximity to Tyler. I just, I've heard good things about them in the past. They've got a lot of experience administering a $6 million grant. For us, is no challenge for these guys. It's not that these guys handle smaller stuff than Grant Works. I think that $6 million is negligible for them. They handle stuff much larger than this. And so, again, I can't sit here and tell you why one of these is going to be better for us than another one. I think either one would be. I just like dealing with these Texas folks. And it turns out they're the cheaper of the two, so that's an added benefit. So I also echo Barbara's opinion. Now, again, we didn't intentionally cut you guys out of this. I thought we were maybe doing you a favor. But if you'd like to take a little more time and read over these, we can certainly do that. We don't have to rush this decision. But if y'all are prepared and ready, I guess the next step will be to sit down and talk with the selected one. And we can maybe even, you know, talk about that rate. But I think that these guys did us a favor by telling you, hey, this is what we're going to charge you. We are confident enough to know what work is involved in this grant that we'll go ahead and give you a dollar figure. Didn't expect that, but we got it. Questions for myself or Barbara?
Feel better about it knowing what they're going to charge us. I thought that was going to be a higher percentage.
I really thought it was going to be way higher than that, myself. But again, you're going to understand a little more as to why when we look at item number 11, why that rate is down from where it might have been a year ago.
I'll make a motion, we go with Trailer and Associates.
Okay, the motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to select Trailer and Associates to administer the American Rescue Plan funds. That means that it's, the next step will be to sit down and meet with them. I would like to have them make a presentation to the court rather than just to Barbara and I. I'd like for you guys to be able to see who they send up here and hear from them. We can either do that in open, I don't know. Do you do that in open meeting or should there be perhaps a smaller committee, Barbara, that would meet with them?
I would suggest a smaller committee and then for any actions taken, they're going to require that they come back for open discussion.
Okay. So let's plan on that, that the next meeting that we'll have will be at least Barbara and myself. If there are any of you that would like to sit in on that meeting or so, I imagine it would be an hour or so. Please let me know. We don't want to have a quorum there, although we could. But I think it makes sense to keep it a small group just to talk about, you know, their role and why we should absolutely make the decision to hire them. So what we're doing here is to enter into the next phase, and that is to talk about the fee. We like the fee that they've given us is reasonable, and if so, I would like that next step easier.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, second by Commissioner Parkman, to select Trailer Associates. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On that same topic, item number 11. This, actually, I'll give credit to Trailer Associates, right? They were the ones that made this suggestion to you, Barbara. And they said that we could save us some time and potentially some grief if we went ahead and considered and now approve the entirety of the county's ARPA fund allocation, that being $6.3 million, that we report it within the standard allowance category to offset the county's lost revenue due to the pandemic. You've heard that $10 million figure before. Barbara has stated it again. If you are receiving less than $10 million, you kind of get a pass. And you can just check the box that says, we're taking the standard allowance. And the federal government is assuming that if you're less than $10 million, that you are in a county that lost revenue due to the pandemic and they're not making you come up with all the calculations and explanations as to why you qualify for that amount. So that's a nice favor that we, under the $10 million threshold, have received. So what we need to do, or what I recommend that you do, is to, just like it says, approve the entirety of the amount, the full $6.3 million fund allocation to be utilized and reported within the standard allowance category. And we'll need this to be able to say this has gone through court and approved by the court will be a necessary part. We might as well get that over with because it's an easy decision. There's no way we would want to not take that standard allowance and have to justify our amount of the grant.
I will say that, and I did, I don't know if they all did.
We all went to that.
Yeah. And they recommended this to, at one of our classes we had at school this year.
Nobody told me.
Oh, you need to ask somebody who knows what's going on around here. We know.
I should have called you, John.
We've been educated. I think every county's going to probably do that under $10 million.
Yeah, under $10 million, sure.
All right, I make a motion that we approve that entirety to lost revenue.
With the standard allowance.
Standard allowance.
All right.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judge Lee, can I add something, please?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we understand, this allows us to accept the funds. We don't have to do the paperwork to get the funding, but the paperwork still continues for whatever decisions are made for the use of those funds in the future.
Yeah, that doesn't mean we have carte blanche on how you spend it. It's just, we don't have to justify the decision.
Still a major headache coming. Tell that.
Okay, we are down to...
Vote on number 11?
Did we not vote on? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 13, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion, we approve them.
Motion to approve said reports. Commissioner Parkman?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make that motion?
Ooh, I think Jimmy did.
Ooh, Jimmy fast.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me pass on to you these for your signatures. We've got a rather lengthy budget amendment that's essentially some mid-year cleanup. I think there is an extra copy or two over there if anybody in the audience wanted to look at that or take, not that there's anything earth shattering, it's just that it's rather lengthy. And I'm going to kind of hit just the highlights on these. Item number 15, approve budget amendments. I've got four pages worth. This is all under the category of mid-year budget review. First item is $65,010 coming out of general county contingency. This amendment is the result of the mid-year budget review, which is designed to determine if the budget is sufficient. In total, these adjustments to the budget result in a decrease to the general county contingency fund of $65,101. So we're pulling money out of that line item contingency. We're taking $65,000 of $226,000 to leave a remaining $161,000. So now I'll run through what these are that comprise this. The next item is $864. The next item is $864. TAC returned $865 in employee rewards and recommends these funds to be used for employment, employee wellness meetings. $350, no, $450 plus $600 to increase the need for court translator services. A jury trial was required for county court resulting in these jury fees. The next item, we have office supplies were ordered last year in a timely manner but were delayed due to the COVID pandemic and paid from the current budget year, which resulted in insufficient funds in the current year. There continues to be an increase in the number of court appointed attorneys. So this has to do with $1,825 worth of office expense and $47,500 worth of district court attorneys that are assigned to indigent defense, indigent defendants. So $1,825 was the office supplies there at district court and $47,500 in indigent attorney fees. We have the district attorney's office. This is a $27,500 non-budget impact adjustment between two accounts, reimbursement from the state and reimbursement to the prosecutor, $27,500. We have in the county auditor's office, we're pulling some money for assistant auditor salaries. And we're taking that out of part-time salaries because she's no longer qualified. It's part-time, is that what the explanation is?
Judge Lee, I actually budgeted all of those, excuse me, all those in auditor salaries. But I need to separate the part-time line item. And that's what I'm attempting to do here.
Okay, so pull $18,000 out of auditor salaries and put it into the part-time salaries budget. Zero budget impact on that. Talco Volunteer Fire Department is the next line, has more calls and/or active volunteers. So we are funding $1,500 more for Talco. This is for run money. Run money. We needed $1,500 additional run money there to make them whole. Next department is sheriff's office. Medical transport fluctuates based on the medical needs of inmates. Education pay fluctuates based on the certificates earned by employees. Cell phone reimbursements were put in place many years ago. And this line item fluctuates based on the needs of the department. And lastly, the capital outlay line did not initially include graphics for the new vehicles. So there was four items I went over. We're adding $1,500 to medical transport, beefing that budget up. $2,490 we're adding to education to pay that certificate-based benefits. $1,320 for additional cell phone allowances and $7,325 for the graphics on the new vehicles. The next one is an increased benefit to the county, or excuse me, no. Costing us more money due to increased property taxes. We do pay property taxes on our print works office over there on the corner of the building. And the valuation there did go up. And consequently, the taxes are going up. So we need to put $500 more in the budget. Courthouse expenditures. We've got changes to reflect, our changes in our custodial staff. We're adding $9,600 to the custodian salary line item along with FICA, Medicare, retirement, and hospitalization. Zero net impact there. We're pulling it out of hospital insurance, $11,650. And we're able to do that because?
Because they're not covered for 60 days. So therefore, you have leftover money in that.
So we had a gap in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next line item is courthouse security. We're pumping another $700. We're pulling that out of the balance in the security fees fund. And that's additional cost of electronic security maintenance. The next line item has to do with projects on FM 1735 to allocate fund for legal fees for imminent domain process and acquisition and utility relocation costs. We're having to hire that outside law firm we talked about at the last meeting to help us with these parcels that are requiring imminent domain proceedings because of tax liens, as you'll recall, not because we're having to do battle with a landowner. We're putting in $378,000 in acquisition and acquisition costs and utility costs. And we're pulling that out of the balance that we have in the right-of-way fund. And we still continue to think we'll have adequate money in that account to pay these. And then the final budget amendment here is to increase, an increase in employee paid deductions, TAC county benefits. Explain that one to me. That's just additional revenues where we had previously budgeted that at $1,003, we're adding $435 and bringing that up to $1,007,000. Explain that one to me, Barbara.
The net impact of this is zero. But what we needed to do is we have an increase in employee paid deductions, what people have taken out of their checks. So when it comes out of their checks, it goes into this fund as a revenue source. So that's why you see those revenue increases on TAC employee deductions. On TAC county benefits, those are there because of the increase that we had in January, of, you know, the increase in TAC, what those costs were. And then the life insurance is with Guardian. Miscellaneous revenue is, we actually got, let me back up, miscellaneous revenue. That fund has some outstanding checks from '15 through '18, I think. Yeah, and so we need to reissue those checks. The way you do that is you show that as income, $6,302. And then you see down there, medical claims runoff, $6,302. So your action today will allow Ms. Preddy to reissue those checks. Most of those checks go to local vendors within the area. Checks were written over the course of '15 through '18, and they just weren't cashed for some reason. So we're just continuing to clean up the insurance fund.
Are we, is, do we have to contact those entities that didn't cash those checks?
We're just going to reissue new ones. I mean, Titus Regional Medical Center has five or six.
That were never cashed.
Six from the medical center, health care, and they're actually issued the checks. And there are several of them, so I'm beginning to.
Am I one of them? I don't even remember that. Those are your individual components of budget amendment number 16 for the current year. Please approve it.
Make a motion, we approve the budget.
Second.
Motion and a second, Parker and Fitch, to approve that. Item number 16, amend budget amendment. All in favor, say aye. Item 16, sign pay orders and approve payment of our current bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
We couldn't get anybody to make a motion at the last meeting, Jimmy. They were scared.
They were scared.
Probably scared too, afraid I was going to haunt them or something.
We had no leader.
Okay, who was the second over here? Fitch is the second to pay bills. All in favor, say aye. Item number 17, closing comments. A long meeting, sorry about that, but a productive meeting. It's always good to have heavy participation from the people who's, people who are going to be affected by our decision. So I'm grateful for a smooth and non-volatile meeting. And thank you for everyone's comments, especially on the court. Gosh, there was something else, but I can't think of what it was. Can't think.
Commissioner Parchment.
I just want to say that I'm not against giving anybody raises or any department. I just think it's the wrong time of year to be asking for one. Because I feel like if we were to give that department a raise, what's to stop any other department coming in here saying, hey, you give them a raise, what about us? I just kind of feel like we didn't need that kind of trouble right now. That's why I made my decision the way I did.
And that was certainly discussed by Pam and myself. And you're absolutely right, sometimes we don't think about the repercussions. And sometimes we have to face the repercussions head on. But either way, let's just hope that she can find somebody who's willing to be patient and get them on board as a quality member of that staff.
I just want to say we support, I support volunteer firemen. Fire associations, our volunteer departments in our county and our city firemen that fill our contract and go. And Chief McCray does always send extra people, extra equipment. And we're sport, and that's a good thing. I hope it continues that way. It's a good working relationship. Those guys do it 24/7, day in and day out. They are super dedicated, and I thank them for that.
Indeed. All right, 12:44. 11:44. All right, you ready? Okay, motion by Jeff to finish up.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.